No, no alternatives to speak. John, any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no changes now.
Okay. The minutes of March eleventh twenty twenty four. Um, I'll make a motion that we accept them and present it. Also, any discussion or in favor, I propose extension to our Vera.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Do you think for those approved, I mean, some citizens, anything anybody would like to bring up for us, not already on the agenda? Okay, we're, uh, we have a public hearing this evening. So we will step out of our regular meeting mode and into public hearing mode. And it's a special permit application for USS Vineyard Solar LLC for a ground mounted solar array. As an accessory used at four sixty eight route eighty seven map thirty lot thirty eight. RA zone lot area is fifty six point three two acres per section eight point one five. Uh, so. Would the applicant like to speak?
Rick, I recuse myself.
Yes, so just for the record, Mr. Taylor is accusing himself of not landing his own.
Answer your question, yes. Rick, please. That's all right. And if you could introduce yourself.
Of course, you might could just, I can point to the button over there, you all have copies of it.
We all have copies, so.
We all have copies.
Yeah.
Rick, I could also, I could also put it on the screen if you'd like.
Sure, yeah, I think I mean it'd be, uh, good.
Which.
Yeah, you might, uh, scroll into one down, I believe it's in the packet. It'd be the, uh. You know, we all say when I really might have to go further down.
What do you know, what, what's the, what's the, the?
So you're at C one three right now, you gotta go down to four one.
That's a seven, okay.
There it is, thank you. All right, my name is Dan Southland, I'm, uh, here representing US Solar, we're proposing maybe one megawatt solar facility on, well, that's the favorite property in Fort Six Eight. David Route eighty seven, everyone more or less familiar with her than. Um, let me give you a little background on who we are, we are, uh, US Solar, we're based out of Minneapolis, but have a local presence, we have an office in Fairview. As well as Boston, Massachusetts. Um, we develop solar arrays, small scale solar arrays, uh, community scale solar arrays, that's anything five megawatts and lower. So we develop, construct, own and make. These solar arrays at no cost to the property owner. Um, so we've actually built over a hundred of these to date, it surpassed that, which is a big milestone for our company. Uh, but you know, it's, it's our goal to work with the, the town to make sure that these are constructed and invested in the town. The townspeople, they're just as well as the property owner. Um, so we reached out to the papers because they have a desirable location for solar. The back area back there is, is clear, it's flat and it's dry. And, um, on sacred eighty seven, we had free phase, so, um, we really checked off a lot of those boxes for the project, making it a very ideal, desirable location. Uh, so we have two pathways to go forward. One being whatever source which we actually already checked off. Uh, we got the green light from them in order to interconnect to their existing infrastructure. Um, both, you know, the, the free phase wiring along with the seven as well as the substation. And then the next is just the, uh, the permit process for the town with this wireline here, so. Um, to give you, you know, background on the project, again, this is going to be a one megawatt solar facility at point ninety nine nine. The cost is around up for simplicity purposes, but, um, this will power roughly seven hundred and fifty homes with renewable electricity. The footprint of the array itself, um, in the, you know, the sub corner there will be seven acres. Um, about the fifty five acre parcel. Uh, the arrays themselves will be on, mounted on what's called a single access tracker system. So to kind of increase efficiency out here in the northeast. Um, the array will be tilted towards the east in the morning and then slowly tilt towards the west. At, um, towards kind of the later parts of the activity. That obviously increases efficiency, it's, you know, we haven't seen a lot of sunlight out here, obviously, this, this winter. Today excluded, but, um, so that definitely increases efficiency and allows us to produce, um, as much electricity as possible. Uh, the array itself will also be enclosed by a, uh, seven foot tall, what we call a farm style fence. Um, it's, it's woven wire with wooden posts, we think this matches better, um, with kind of the surrounding area. Realize to be as minimally invasive as possible as well, um, so the pan racking system is just piled up into the ground and we use gravel. For our access road. The, as you can see, we're, there is an existing access road on the property, we're utilizing that same access road, we're actually beefing it up a little bit. But, you know, still using gravel, our approach gravel access road will be fully wide. Um, I believe the existing ground or access road is, is a bit wider than that, um, but again, we're, we are improving it. And then, uh, I'm going to run the access road a little bit longer out towards the array. Um, the construction phase will last roughly three to six month. The bulk of that actually just being ever tours coming to interconnect to the existing infrastructure. Um, and then after that. You know, the array just really sits there and creates electricity, um, we'll send an operator maintenance team out there every month, two months to. Clean up the panels, mow the grasses, make sure everything looks clean and tidy and is all operating and efficient and, so. That pretty much did it enough, again, this is a pretty simple project, um. Well, I guess I'll, yeah.
Have one question, uh, is your, uh, description that I read, the point being, uh, it said something about customers being able to buy it, or not buying, but. Sign up to take advantage of the, the lower cost electricity, what did you mean, I don't know, I'm not sure what you meant by that.
Yeah, so this is where we don't need ever tours, SCAP program, so the shared community energy facility program, um. That would actually be done through EverSource. We don't, we're going to enter into a power purchase agreement with our eversource and then they end all the, uh, what are called electric originations, so.
But a Columbia resident can actually sign up to take advantage of this kind of.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, and the second question I have, probably for, is this the date, the other people we heard a presentation from?
They is them.
No, no, the person who was going to do the holistic thing.
That one has nothing to do with the other.
But I mean, okay. No, I know that one has nothing to do with the other, but does that mean that they've gone away?
No, just one has nothing to do with the other.
Okay.
Question, what's the projected lifespan of an installation like that?
Yeah, so we're going to enter into a twenty year PPA of our experience with EverSource, um, but, you know, we would love for it to, so minimum of twenty years, um. We would love for it to, to go longer, so we're just at the limit, if they want to extend, we would, you know, likely fall to.
Okay. And at the end of that, um, if they didn't extend, would you uninstall these and remove them?
That's correct, so, uh, the lease agreement we have in place required us as the company to come in, what we call decommission or, um, you know, take out the array and restore the. The back muscles to exist.
I don't have any other questions, um, any other comments from the public, I want to open this up to John. I, any thoughts that you have about this?
Um, I, I do not, I, I mean, it's, um, well back on the property, if you look at an aerial photo and we can, I could bring one of those up, but. This is a, you know, an open field that's at the far end of, um, you know, wooded and grassland property. Um, it's, you know, several hundred feet from any neighbors and surrounded by, uh, a tree line. On all sides of the, the clearing, um, and again, you know, the, the fence is seven feet, the, the solar panels won't be much larger than that, much higher than that. Um, it seems like it's going to be largely, um, not disruptive of the, of the neighborhood.
Okay, any other comments or questions from you?
I just have one, I have one quick question, so if you use that three to six month timeframe for build up, so what does that generally look like, what impact for? I mean, digging utilities, like the installation of the panel, or? Yeah, so, uh, actually installing the panel requires a week, okay, um, they're going to need to the prolonged time, what we trend a little higher, uh, to. Eighty seven, uh, that probably, probably, but again, it's just really getting effort towards out there, uh, to interconnect. Those are, it isn't more waiting than the actual physical things that, okay, so, and no offense to anyone who worked for EverSource, but they were exactly.
Do you, anything else coming along? Um, you saying you need to keep, uh, the public hearing open?
But have you had any experience with after the twenty years with things, you know, ending and what you do with it, you know, really what you do with them and. Do they all have to be replaced or what's the?
We have not, we've, um, our company's been around for ten, eleven years, so we haven't really hit that threshold yet, um, there are a lot of. Um, you know, endeavors to make sure that these panels were recycled and then, uh, everything just gets recycled and reused, that meaning everything from, you know, from backfire to.
I know it's probably pretty mature, but I know that a few years ago, there was a lot of thought about what to do with them after the twenty years. If you could tell me on the chemicals and everything else that was there.
Right.
But you have not run into that yet.
Not yet, no.
Okay, now you have come, you're saying your company has not run into it.
That's correct.
Have you heard about other companies, have they run into it?
I, I, I'm sure, this is a relative new industry.
I understand, um, but there are companies out there that have been doing it for twenty years.
Yep.
There are, yeah. And you don't have the information on it, so. Could you get us that information?
I'm sorry, yeah, I should.
That'd be great.
Just again. What exactly are you?
Well, I'm just trying to see what, what, what's going on with companies that have been doing it for twenty years and more. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm curious, woman. I mean, I've heard some negative stuff, I've heard some positive stuff, and I'm just, I mean, that's a lot, it's seven acres, that's a lot of fossil, it's not like, uh. You know, panels on and off, yeah.
Okay, so. Uh, the panel you use, are they domestically produced, or they?
We, uh, we are trying to, so these panels are actually made in, in China, um, but there is a, oh, a large, uh, push forward for us to use domestic content. Um, issued areas, the, you know, United States, they try to, I mean, some more. If anyone can figure out a way to drive those off now, I'm all ears, uh, but right now from an economic perspective. You know, it, it makes the, the profit a lot more.
Is the projected lifespan of the panel twenty years and more?
Yeah, yeah, there'd be a degradation of point zero five percent every year, so after twenty three percent that we operate.
That's what I've heard, twenty years seems to be the number.
Really appropriate for me to ask a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, and it's all for a question because I.
Identify yourself.
Well, favor, I mean, danger, four sixty eight route eighty seven, um.
Tom alluded to chemicals that might be, um, a challenge, and you discussed, uh, the, say, the. Chemical makeup of the panels that you're using in such a way that you might alleviate some of the worry that we're talking about.
Yes, so actually, the, excuse me, the state of Connecticut requires our panel manufacturer to go through a weeding procedure. Uh, the panels are made of silicon, aluminum and glass. And again, the, the state of Connecticut actually has a regulation in place where, again, our panel manufacturer needs to go through extensive testing from a weeping perspective. To make sure that chemicals, if, you know, the silicon, aluminum, glass, if a panel is upgraded, that it don't reach into the ground. So these, these panels do pass the state protocol for that weeding procedure.
Have you heard any, um, rumors, I guess would be the way to put it, um. To get someone a tax credit so the, the, the panel made in the United States will be more competitive for seventy percent difference in.
Yes, there is a, so that is, that's, I think, what alludes you to a lot of the endeavors put forth by the federal government, there's a ten percent. What's called domestic content matter, so from a tax credit perspective, uh, the government, the federal government will pay for it, since we're not the government we use. Those domestically manufactured panel. Hello. And I, this is kind of going deeper into the solar industry, industry itself. The US manufacturing factory is using in film, um, solar panel, which is actually not as. They, as what works in with the Chinese manufacturing, so, uh, they'll they figure out to get the technical. Producing a safe and secure, we have a little part, you know, our answer.
Right.
And your question, um. I'm, I'm interested in, in how, what your, what your interest is in the, in any product. That you do, do you retain, it sounds like you retain ownership of all the materials. So that would come, if there was a problem, that would come directly back on you and hold the. The homeowner free of any liability, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, worth it.
And then, and, and your commitment to the project is a, um. The twenty year lease was not, is that the situation?
That's right.
Okay, what is your typical, um, at the end of the twenty years, um, what is your typical renewal, do you go on a buy, I'm just interested in is what type of. Commitment your company normally has on any project in any town, not this particular project.
Yeah.
Um, for a, uh, a renewal after you already have it in ways.
Yeah.
Typically.
Yeah, it would be by a five year renewal, so we have our lease and is built out to be a maximum forty years, so we have four. There's four options at a five year.
Okay, four options for the five year, but after the twenty.
Yeah, yeah.
Come to that great.
That's right. But again, we're at the window, the utility of the state.
Well, yeah, that's sort of a, it's sort of a follow up to like the concerns that Tom has, as hard as, um, different, you know, everybody hears different stories and you don't know if it's an actual true basis for. Um, where the product comes from, and of course, everyone knows that they, even though the products are always cheaper from China, it is, well, China doesn't usually have a power. Best influence that part being in the USA, um, so we're just, you know, looking out for not only the land that's here in town, but also for the homeowners that. You know, are signing up for something and make sure that your people aren't going to be the ones to stand behind it, if they have a problem that it doesn't land on them.
Of course.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
See, I got one more question, how many, um. Locations are you, I'm just, let's do, uh, say, Holland and Windham County, I mean, you, you have, you have a, um.
So we're actually just working up three in state of Connecticut, uh, one in Torrance and one in Ellington.
And this one.
Okay.
Currently, currently in, in progress?
In development.
Been developed, and where are the ones that you have, um, can you give us an idea of the ones that are up and running?
Uh, yeah, they're all, I'd say ninety five percent are in this one. Uh, in this, so the solar market was, you know, one of the. That's right, so, right.
You could love that, yeah.
And then we have a couple.
So I'm a chair in Connecticut or what?
Just the three in, in this organization, uh, SCAP program with the lease five years ago, so.
Okay, there.
Any other questions, information, I just want to open up in case there's anyone who, oh, has a comment or question. Anything from the public? Um. From my perspective, I think we have enough information to make a decision on it, don't we, now, that, um, I don't know any. About what they're going to do with the panels at the end of the use, that really, if they're going to get removed from the site, that really precludes its only perspective. Uh, so I would suggest that we close the public hearing and then potentially vote on that, this is the only.
That's fine with me.
Everyone good for that? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, I'll say it, any discussion, those in favor? Jan Anan, thank you. Okay, thank you for your presentation. Uh, unfinished business, special permit application, John, you want to, to hear? We have the special permit, uh, make, uh, for the record, um. Mr. Taylor sees back at the table.
Um, so again.
Sorry, maybe before I did, this is with that. Uh, from the zoning perspective, is that, you know, comes up to the forward, I guess.
We have to address it, if, um, we have to vote on that next. So we closed the public hearing, so the pre had a process was, and I was a little bit loose because there's really no public. Patient requested, but if there was, I would have given the public opportunity to weigh in and, uh. In the public hearing, we've now closed the public hearing, so no more, uh, testimony can be taken on the application. And then we'll take it up in the next section on unfinished business, and that's where we'll vote on it, and so we've, um. Gone out of our public hearing mode and back into our regular meeting mode.
Thank you.
No, no, good question, makes me think I should explain that. So the, um, application, uh, special permit application of. Dava, is it, Sideman of Fairview Farm LLC for a major impact home occupation in three one route sixty six, map twenty eight, lot twenty one. RA zone lot area is six point four acres, uh, per section eight point five point four, um. Where are we on this, John?
So, yeah, that, so the applicant with Drew, um, this was, um, a, the property, um, it's an old farmhouse and it's got, uh, like a large storage building, that's sort of like a low barn. In the back, um, that they had been using, uh, this storage barn for decades, apparently, as an unregistered illegal. Uh, self-storage operation, commercial self-storage operation. Um, the, the patriarch of the family passed away, the family is disposing of the estate and selling the property and wanted to know if they could market it as a legitimate business. Um, and the answer was no, um, because it was an illegal commercial facility in, in the rural agricultural zone. Um, and, uh, we determined based on the intensity of the use. That it might qualify as a, a, uh, major impact home occupation, which would be a special permit review. Um, and so they were proceeding down that path, um, but then, uh, I guess lined up a buyer and wanted to go ahead and, and do the closing. Uh, without this, um, so they withdrew the application. Um, we have no information currently what the terms were of the sale and, and what was conveyed in terms of information and. Um, and permissions, I guess, um, so it, the hope is that it was conveyed just as a residential or agricultural property. Um, some of the neighbors have doubts that it will be just that, and, and they think, you know, it, it's a. Self-storage place that was earning somewhere between seventy and eighty thousand dollars a year. Um, so, you know, but someone might be loathe to abandon that, so we're going to keep an eye on it and, uh, be ready to, to pounce, essentially, if they, uh. Propose to continue that commercial operation, but, um, you know, as, as far as I understand, that the Sidemans are no longer the owners of that property.
Okay, so the status of this special permit application has been withdrawn?
Correct.
Okay, so we have no action today.
No action necessary, just move on.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, seven point two, this is a special permit application for USS Vineyard Solar LLC for a ground mounted solar array. As an accessory used at four sixty eight route eighty seven, map thirty, lot thirty eight, RA zone, lot area fifty six point three two acres per section eight point one five. What's your pleasure, commission members, I don't really have any questions about this, we very straightforward.
Cause you're in the building, just seven foot down, right? Correct, did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, just, yeah, yeah.
Is there any visibility from any of these houses guys to?
Okay, as I am a fan of, no, there isn't, but that's because I'm perfectly familiar with the site.
Yeah.
You know, maybe a slight view from Bodet terrace, if you were looking right down the driveway, but not really discernible.
Okay. Cause those are the only ones that really there are houses on that. In the running way, near it, right?
This, this.
One, two, three, four, five, whatever, six.
Yeah, from a adjacent property impact, it's a, you know, a near ideal situation.
Is that you?
Yeah, I just, there, there is no impact on each one of the property. I don't need to testify on that, I just, that's my awareness of, that I've looked at it.
We're seeing that the map indicate that, so, yeah, very, very far up over eighty seven.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not worried about eighty seven as much as him, we just.
Yeah.
But you're okay with that?
Yes, very much so.
You? Okay, I'm just, I'm not trying to be in charge of this.
No, I understand.
Well, I don't think, too many people that, I mean, so far back, who would have gone down that far anyway?
Okay, there aren't any questions, I'll make a motion that we approve the application presented.
Also, yeah.
Any discussion, those in favor?
I think it's great.
Yeah, thank you. Very nice job, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
That was one of the toughest public hearings I've experienced. Is that my vote? What you die here to wait?
You can remember that wall, and we have so many people say that we're, it's just more hard to get along with.
Listen to the break, they, you know, he was.
It must have stayed so long.
So, just, just for the record, make note of Mr. Taylor didn't even really extend, he did already extend prior, now he's seated at, uh, in the map.
And after the fact.
After the fact.
After the fact.
Well, he didn't.
Okay.
Go lucky.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, item eight one, a site plan application for Robert Caldwell, most. Caldwell Realty LLC to instruct a vehicle repair shop at forty one route six, map two, uh, twenty, it's in a CM one zone. Lot area is nine point six eight acres, it's the per section thirty one point two point six. Uh, so this is a site plan. Application, I'm not a public hearing, so, uh, Mr. Reynolds, do you?
Yes, yes, I am. Or yours, it is the simplest of site plans, so. I'm always have a lot to, I have got some holograms here, so this is not new information, this is just representative of a little. More clarity, some color, it's not going to put on the board, but I stopped reading the word from you during COVID and I don't come back. You know, you had, I heard otherwise it'd be on the screen, um, so, just for orientation, um. The first sheet is. The first sheet is that this the property is in yellow. Um and I put a little inset at the bottom corner, you can see your CM one zone outlined there, that's right, straight off the zoning map. So we're um along route six, just down from uh where Whitney Road comes in. So we're just down there a little bit and we're on the um the north side. So the property kind of sits between route six and the trail. Um and and we'll see in another slide, it's separated top topographically from the trail. But it's in that area, it's just a slight to land that's in between the two. Um so squarely in the CM one zone, the proposed use is for a um. I think it best fits your regulation under the one that you you mentioned, it it's a vehicle repair. Um uh the applicant does repair and restoration, mostly restoration. Um so it's a simply, we can we can flip to the second sheet. Um I threw the aerial in there, so you can see where it is um compared to other uses. Um there's some uh residential properties at the at the front. Um but this is nine point seven acres, there's a lot of space between uh between those houses and the location. You notice that the parcel is sort of like a a rear lot, it's like a flag, there's a a skinny strip. And then it opens up um into the parcel. Um I might as well talk about it now since it's probably easy to see here, is it since it um does open up onto route six. We prepared a sightline demonstration and an entrance plan for DOT. Um they reviewed that and the only thing they asked us to do was to add a stop sign and a stop bar at at the end of the apron. Um because it is a commercial property as opposed to a residential, we do that. Um the proposed driveway is gravel, so what we'll have is a paved apron from. Route six to the property line, to the right of way line, um stop bar and a stop sign and then a gravel driveway the rest of the way. Um there is access to the um property, uh there has been historically um along a little um kind of a. Unimproved gravel driveway that that's been the kind of the access to this property for a long time. So that's uh that's where that is. And then if you go to the third sheet, um we'll just go quickly, that's the property outline and I want everyone to see the geography. So it's kind of like a little hill. Um so there's a a ridge line that runs across the property that separates the. Route side, route six side of the property from the back of the property. Um and all and when you move to the next sheet. And you see where we're proposing to put the building in the driveway, you can see it's wholly on the route six side of the property. So the whole thing is uh just shy of ten acres, so we've got, you know, about three quarters of an acre or so of area that. We're proposing to clear to um to develop the building, the building is uh. Oh, I think we're already on to sheets. The last sheet has most of the good stuff anyway. Um so the the proposed building is one ten by fifty. And um you can see the proposed gravel parking and driveway area. Um the parking area is about forty feet wide, that kind of facilitates turning movements with. Um trailer vehicles and things like this. And then um. And then uh so the grading is uh minimal, we're cutting a little bit in the back into that hillside to create a level place, the. Proposed building would sit on slab. So we're trying to create a a flat area um for a frost wall and slab type construction, so you think of like an oversized garage essentially. Um we uh we will have, um we've investigated for a septic area, it's in red. Um there'd be very minimal use, but it's a code building code and health code requirement. So there'd be um a small, you know, like two-bedroomish size septic system going on to the parcel. Um the septic areas in red. Um and the grading for the 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 way I have laid out the grading is that all of the. Roof drainage and surface runoff from this would flow like the direction of the arrows that I put on the plan. Um to an uh and I created a basin uh at the front. To um catch all that and provide some storage and some infiltration. And um and then where you can see that the property line. Not as well on here, but the property line is down at the bottom left there and you can see there's a good. Strip of woods that we're leaving um to the tune of like fifty to seventy-five feet wide. Um before you you reach the neighbors or budding property. Um I put a zoning compliance chart on this sheet, um. Most of them are so far away from anything that, I mean, in this zone, you're allowed to be like thirty feet. From front, side and rear, um we're a hundred and forty-one, three twelve, three fifty-eight, so. Far, far in excess of that. Um the building itself uh will be well under the forty um foot, it's 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 a single. It's a steel steel child building, just a single floor. Um and then the maximum lot covered, obviously with a ten acre parcel will be. Will will be way, way under, um you'd be allowed up to. Two and a half acres and we're about three quarters maybe. So um. That's about it, I can say I'm I'm happy to answer any questions. Um like I said, uh it's it's about the simplest of site plan that you can get.
So.
Yes.
So we're here, what about parking, uh you're allocated in that space?
We have um, well, we have a gravel uh parking surface, um it's it's open to the public, we we don't, we don't. The business model is not for a high volume of of customers, it's not like um. Like, you know, a car a parts store, it's not, it's not like that.
There's no storefront or anything?
No, that correct, that there's no storefront, but the area along the whole, the area along the front of the building is level. So there's there's ample opportunity for ADA access um anywhere along the front of that building.
Is there a requirement by the state to have designated handicap parking spaces in a commercial? Something like this, I would think that there is.
Yeah, there, yes, we should have one space designated and I'd be happy to do that, yeah, there there should be one because. Um, yeah, this is a commercial aspect, it's it's um. Not a requirement, as far as I know, for the zoning regulations to pave. Um the the gravel, that's allowed, but I think what we'll do, what I think what we'll do, given what you've said is um provide. Like a either a concrete pad, might be an extension of the slab. Just out from the building, it's it's not usually very handy to just put a little bit to in this patch like that, so. I I'll I'll consider, I'll pop with the owner, but we we can add a um. Very easily add a a concrete pad off of one either end of the building. It wouldn't conflict with anything and the grades are very mild.
Question to our town planner.
Yeah.
And so is that done on a commercial property like this? What are the states that do with regard to relying with um any gap? Designated parking spaces?
He's muted.
Yeah, no, I'm I think, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a a a building code question, I believe, um or or. You know, the ADA code, um there's usually a ratio. Um but. Of buildings less than a certain square footage, I believe there is some exemption, but I, that's not a, that's not a zoning, that's not a zoning code. Um.
Okay.
Matter.
Do you don't feel we need to address it?
I don't, I I I, you know, if if um handicapped spaces. Are required by by building code, um they'll he'll have to add that, the zoning doesn't need to specify.
Okay, so we, I don't think we need to hold this up then, I.
And I only want to add so that you feel comfortable that the area is mildly graded, so it's not like we'd be looking to try to put. ADA spaces on this seat though.
Okay, I just, yeah, I think we all have the mindset, the only one would rather what? Is our, the realm of our responsibility. Good question, um is the applicant? The owner of the property or is it the person who's gonna run the facility or is it the same person?
Same. That and it is, um yeah, it it's owned under an LLC, but it's a one, one of the same.
Perfect.
Yeah, do you have a picture of the building? I I do not um have one handy, but it's a. It's a, it's a metal clad steel building.
What we're doing.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Okay, any other questions?
Does it have, does it have going into it?
Well, it's it's one ten, so it's five.
Five, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no other allocation, you know what I mean, like there's not a, like you said, not a storefront, there's just.
The thing with.
Right, right.
For a counter, how do you hand up, John?
Yeah, um uh both um Mary Kay and myself have been trying to get ahold of the applicant, the 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 um. We did not receive in the uh application packet any indication of correspondence with um. Eastern Highlands Health District or approval of the designed septic system. We have no indication of that.
So do we need that part of taking action on this?
Yeah, cause you need to know if if the site is is uh suitable from a public health standpoint.
Okay. So we have a whole follow-up action? Yeah. Well, I think we look, we look with a smile about this at this point.
That that's that's what I was hoping you'd understand.
Yeah, I don't see any concern, any concerns from anybody.
I tell you, it's one of the few sites left in town that's crap. I mean, yeah, it's. It's the river bed.
Yeah, the soils on the site are very well checked.
They're difficult to arm design down. We'll have to continue the court next meeting. Any other questions to bring up?
Two weeks, two weeks, sorry, we only have this dealing.
What is that, the other bureau?
Um and then you said it was the the um the applicant who's going to occupy?
Yes.
The building, he's gonna occupy the entire building?
Yes.
Okay, do um would the applicant? Who's gonna occupy the building, would be coming? Next meeting?
Ah, again, I have.
For some additional questions, I would ask some additional questions like. You know, proposed hours, is he gonna have a designated um drop off spot for um parks and other supplies? Um turning turning radius for that, I need to the parking here. Um if you're gonna have designated. Um and designated parking for um how many employees, you know, the number of employees proposed hour? And you're gonna have any type of uh lighting plan? For the parking?
Yeah, I that I can speak to, the buil- building mounted lights would be the extent of the lighting plan, there's not any. Non-building mounted.
Yeah, well, that pressure is usually is on that way, and that's why I was asking, so maybe if he comes or she, whoever comes next meeting. Then we would be able to ask them the individual questions that have to do with. How?
Yeah. Right, right, so you can feel more comfortable with that, I got it.
Just gonna occupy the thing, who have a better idea, yeah, we're gonna have three people working, we're gonna have two in the shop, and then one in the office. We're gonna be open nine to six, we only expect deliveries to be clean.
Yeah.
Seven AM and nine PM, we're gonna have the lighting, but we're gonna have lighting certain times a day.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, um and Bob can answer, this is an established business that moving to this location. Um he's been in this business for a long time. So I think he could speak very.
If you want delivery, you can tell us where you located them.
Um, I'll let him talk. Okay, yeah. I'll I'll have him back and I will um dot the i's on a few of these things. And um.
Maybe is it a design plan or anything for this?
Uh at the street, well, that's a curiosity, um the the problem with that that is that the DOT right away is a little funny right there. I don't know if you can visualize it, but in that spot, the pavement is very wide. Like from the white line, there's a good eight to ten feet of pavement beyond it, beyond the white line. And so the DOT is not not excited about signs in the right way. So um I don't think he's going to pursue a sign within the right of way. So any kind of sign that there would be would be. Really like awkwardly far off the street, so I'm not, I'm not sure how we're planning to address that, so it'd be a good thing to talk with Bob about it.
Or if he's gonna have a gate, as you visualuded to, I believe he did. Maybe it was not, no, I'm I'm gonna say, if he does have a gate, maybe this might have been on the gate.
I'm.
Yeah.
No, no, I have no plan for a gate.
Oh.
What if he did, it would be internal to the site.
Which. I'm just trying to get a little bit more into there, is it so powerful that it's had a curtail sign on it for plate sometime?
It is.
And the bricks are pretty.
It's just.
It looks like up a little hill, a little hole on the way in.
It goes up a little bit and then down, then up again to the side, yeah, it is, it is, it's just the way it's signed, it's really hard to know, but.
It backs up a little bit.
It, yes, it does, isn't it? Well, no, it it it's close to it, but not very straight to it, if you look on that one. Um you look at the. I guess the very first map, you can see there's a parcel, there's a bit of money in between the.
Little bit.
Same, yeah, yeah. That's associated with the larger parcel. Optics.
Mr. Reynolds, I would just think um if we had the health department approval, we have the detail about. Uh onsite lighting.
Um.
Uh and if there's no closed sign at this point, then there was no need to address it, if we had those two, we probably could have taken action on it.
I understand. Playing is nice, it's easy to read. Hey, what do you mean to quite a month, it's um.
Very.
Yeah, it's good.
We'd like to take care of this.
Yeah, I appreciate that, cause I know a lot of places where it's not the case.
Like, I think you six, eight, money on it.
Thank you. All right. Bye, thank you. So we're gonna continue this to our next meeting, which is.
Twenty second.
For twenty second. Uh it, um Monday before twenty second at seven PM at. I'm not here. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Um next up, Justin, you wanna form everyone as to where we are with regards to the planned neighborhood housing?
Yeah, I would, so we went over the timeline last meeting. Uh kind of getting everything finalized and proposing and doing kind of the formal. Presentation of the commission on the twenty second and then deciding public hearing after that, depending on what the input was. And we're on course for that, uh we have what should be our. Final subcommittee meeting tomorrow morning with John, just to find out if he moves in. And uh hoping to get very, very shortly thereafter. What would be the finalized draft of the commission, so you get plenty of time to review it, um I'll do kind of a formal walkthrough on the twenty second. And then we'll get input, decide what to do from there. For for a very, very close.
Thank you.
Right.
Any communications and reports to go over? Did everybody, uh this is a question, did everybody finish their education in uh appropriate timeframe, all commission members?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Audience, anything you want to bring up tonight? No, we won't, I did. Okay, I'm I'm.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, it's like a big long, I probably. So um did we just, or did we get anywhere as far as um having? Thinking about having to meeting?
I had a, oh, I'm glad you brought that up, I had a conversation with Connie today. Um my main desire for having her meet is to get input on regulations. And she did agree to send me an email, yes, and various specific regulation changes that. What's causing you the most agitation as our zoning enforcement agent that we could rectify with some regulations?
Help her.
Yeah, and she did mention the accessory structure thing with regard to generator pads and. Uh mini split compressors that are mounted on a building or immediately adjacent to a building. And she could really use some relief because her interpretation is the regulation. Requires a zoning permit when you're doing those kinds of changes and she doesn't really feel a need for it. So I've asked her to uh send me an email with the specifics, but anything else you can think of in the regulations? Now, if you want to have her come with regards to enforcement issues. Uh that's a separate question, you know, we'd be getting more information if we, you feel we need more grade, but I'd like to really, I'd rather. Throw out specific questions to her, then on this issue, where are we? I can tell you on anything that's gone to court, it's out of her hands.
Right.
You know, I received some communication about the property on route six. Um what that we're in, uh for some legal action on and, you know, can't talk about that in open. Uh in an open commission meeting, but I have really no updates for anybody, I don't have any updates. Um I don't, there's been. I I can tell you that I did testify at a hearing on the appeal of the. Uh with the the wedding venue, um and more, more of a pre-trial meeting. Effective meeting and that's continued for another thirty days and that's all public record, so I can talk about anything that's happened there. There's really nothing that that is not public discussable. Um so as far as Connie goes, I do expect prior to our next meeting to have some very specific request from her. If anyone feels strongly that we'd like to have her attend. Gladly, um we'll get, I'll I'll push to get a an updated enforcement action list. Gladly, um, we'll get, I'll, I'll push to get a, an updated enforcement action with. And open there.
Because I, I think that would be helpful, because if it's, if there's a, if we can find a recurring, uh, thing on those violations. And if it's something that we can do to help the situation. I mean, maybe, wait, wait.
I, I think. First charge is let's make it simple for the public to get their work done. You know, by having regulations that are easy to understand and easy to comply with. And, and if we don't need them, not happen.
Yeah, I think we can definitely continue on that work in the subcommittee.
Yeah.
Uh, when we look at statistics, that's where we need to do that.
That's been the mindset, is how do we make this more simple, and how do we get rid of a lot of pages? Of regulation that we really just don't feel we have a need for. To make life simple for everybody. Um, anything else? Um. Findings of citizens, anything from the public? Uh, nothing for executive session, I'll make a motion return.
I'll say again.
All of the favor? Um, you're in favor, that would give us. John, thank you very much. No, I'm expecting, I'm always keeping this paperwork for this application.